New York, as I understand, because again, we don't have a business plan. So the citizens can't understand really what's going on here. But then they needed, they had a nine million dollar one to two match. Now, as I understand that from all the documents which I've read many times, that meant that the Waltons would give them nine million dollars if they could come up with another eighteen million. That's the only way I can understand that. And they came to the city asking for seven million of nine million in public funding. And then they were gonna get the rest. Well, I guess they would've wanted nine million if they could've gotten it. But the mayor made a finding that they couldn't, the city couldn't afford seven million. So the city ended up considering giving them three point one million. And that meant they'd still have to come up with another fourteen point nine million. Apparently, that's being called pledges, but as a taxpayer, I'd like to know that the money is there. And in fact, then the city went ahead through the Advertising and Promotions Committee and has arranged for them to get another three million dollars, two hundred thousand a year over fifteen years. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
That wasn't mentioned in the memo from February twenty-one of two thousand and seventeen. So the city potentially now is into this for six point one million dollars, and we don't have a business plan. Why am I concerned? Well, there are a lot of red flags. I'm not gonna speak for Mr. Tennant. Maybe he spotted some of these, maybe he didn't. But their literature speaks about forty thousand patrons a year, minus educational programs reaching fifteen hundred Fayetteville students at no cost. Then on page seventeen of their brochure, they claim through this Lights Up for Access program to have another eighteen thousand students each year. Does that come out of the forty thousand? They give subsidized tickets, they give free tickets, they give five dollar tickets and ten dollar tickets. Again, we don't know between two thousand and five, when they were founded, and two thousand and seventeen, how many tickets, how much revenue do they generate, what are their costs? We don't know any of this. There's no business plan. But here's the thing that really gets to me. Now, Mr. Becker says, and correctly, he says, "The city is required by law to obtain a performance bond from the contractor or contract manager on building construction projects undertaken by the city." This derives from an eighteen thirty, nineteen thirty-two federal law called the Miller Act. And now this-
One more minute.
I understand. In your memo, Mr. Mayor, and also in Theater Squared's memo, they said, "This will become a publicly owned building constructed on public lands." Your memo admitted the word "constructed." So how then can we waive the requirement to protect public funds that are going into this and allowing them not to have a performance bond? Because that in itself, in my experience, is a red flag. If they need to save a hundred and sixty to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for whatever they want to spend it on and put the public funds more at risk, and I think in a way that's not even legal, then I would object to this and ask that the city consider this and we get some opinions on what's going forward here. This is a lot of money.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Anyone else in the public who'd like to address this? Okay, I'm gonna bring you back to the council. Okay, who wants to be first? Adelle?
Well, Mayor, this is a very exciting time. I, you know, we've just done a lot of good things tonight, and this is certainly one of them. And I am delighted to support this expenditure. And I would like to make the motion that we pass the resolution.
Sarah?
I'll second that.
Now, was anyone else like to? Any other comments from the council before we vote? John?
I haven't studied it, Mayor, but I thought Peter raised some interesting points. I mean, exactly how much money are we expected to put up?
Okay, Paul, you wanna answer the finance question?
See, if Fayetteville, three point one million dollars.
Is that total?
Uh, if you wanna count the A and P Commission, they have committed to that also.
So six point two.
That's six point two. A thirty-one point five million dollar project. Uh, the city is required, if we do the construction, this is construction not by the city. We're not a part of the construction contract, and that is why we do not require a performance bond. Okay, so that's to answer that particular question, but that's the investment of the city. This is going to be constructed like a leasehold improvement by them, based on their lease. Point in time, if they default on the lease, et cetera. Or, if the time of the lease expires, as a return, it'll revert to the city and be a city asset. So it'll be a city asset, but it's like a leasehold improvement built on city property. It's not being built by the city.
Mayor, I just wanna make sure we're clear for the public that watches this, that the council only authorizes the three point one. The Advertising and Promotion Commission, a separate body, has to make the decision on the remaining six point one amount.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, Sarah, uh, Sarah?
I'd just like to add, from a construction perspective, the highest risk point in the construction process is in the excavation and foundation. That's where the greatest unknowns are, in terms of, you know, you could hit rocks or caverns, especially in that area, or groundwater. And building the foundation can sometimes be a challenge. But the building has already had the basement complete, so we're out of the danger zone. The next highest risk would be the final punch list, and those are generally cheap and easy items to go in and complete if there were, if there were an issue at that area. I mean, it's still obviously not optimal, but from a cost perspective, that's a very small percentage of the construction cost relative to the foundation and getting it up out of the ground.
My next question.
Um, yeah, I'd just extend what Councilmember Marsh explained. All that is absolutely true. And furthermore, there are a lot, uh, there are standard practices used by the private sector in development and construction to mitigate the risk when a performance bond is not utilized. In fact, in private sector construction, until you get to a very high level, performance bonds are almost not used at all because of the costs associated with them. Instead, there are detailed requirements for lien waivers to be implemented and released at all stages of the process and with every pay application. I'd be very surprised if that is not the practices being utilized here, probably as required by the lender, Arvis, who stands to lose eighteen million in cash if Theater Squared did not have a business plan, which of course they do, and if they were unable to raise their, their private donations. So, you know, I trust the legal opinion of our staff who says that this is kosher. And furthermore, I trust the practices that have been evaluated by Theater Squared, their board. I do think they've done their due diligence on this, and I think the Arvis Lending Committee did their due diligence on this as well. And when all parties in the process make the decision that bonds are an over cautious mechanism to mitigate the risk of a contractor failing, I tend to trust that. The whole point of the performance bond is if the contractor fails, you can bring in a bonding agent who more or less acts as a trustee for the project to get it back in order and to have enough money, basically, an insurance payout, a bond payout, to be able to hire a brand new contractor and give them the time to mobilize and get on board and gain an understanding of the project. Again, I think all those risks have been assessed and properly analyzed. So I'm comfortable with the decision as recommended by staff.
And again, I do wanna point out that the A and P funding and the city funding are two separate things. They're, it comes from sales tax dollars, but I don't control the A and P funding. They control that, we control this fund. So it's two separate funds. What else? Anything? Okay. Martin, I would like to ask you, there was an estimate on what the economic value would be to the city? For Theater Squared?
Uh, the construction is estimated to generate over, uh, am I answering the question right?
The sales tax money that can be generated from Theater Squared. There was a certain period of time.
The overall construction impact on the local economy is in excess of fifty million dollars just from the eighteen month construction period alone. Only a portion of that is sales tax, you know, direct spending by the contractors, of course, and other sales tax inputs, but it's significant. And then once the facility is completed, our organization's economic impact grows from around three million dollars a year to over five million dollars a year.
So when we talk about driving the economic engine of the city, this is one of the ways we do it. Thank you. All right. Anything else? All right, yes. We have a motion to a second. Uh, Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Patty?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Benj?
Yes.
Latere?
Yes.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
All right, thank you all. Number three. An ordinance to waive the requirements for a competitive bidding and approve a contract between the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas and the Area Agency on Aging of Northwest Arkansas in the amount of ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars to provide public recreation services for the senior citizens of Fayetteville for two thousand and eighteen. Kit?
Whereas providing quality recreation opportunities to the senior citizens of our community is of mutual interest to the City of Fayetteville and the Area Agency on Aging of Northwest Arkansas, which has provided these services to seniors in Fayetteville and Northwest Arkansas for the past forty-five years. And whereas the Area Agency on Aging is very qualified and uniquely able to provide the continuity of services vital to the efficient provision of recreational opportunities to the senior citizens of Fayetteville. Now therefore be ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One. That the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby finds the above circumstances make competitive bidding not feasible or practical, and therefore weighs requirements of formal competitive bidding and approves a contract between the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas and the Area Agency on Aging of Northwest Arkansas in the amount of ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars to provide public recreation services for the senior citizens of Fayetteville for two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, Con?
Connie Edmiston, Director of Fayetteville Parks and Recreation. The Area Agency on Aging has had this agreement for the, for the past, so, well, since two thousand and fourteen. We've had an agreement for forty-five years with the Council on Aging, with the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District. This year, we are requesting approval of a contract of ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven for two thousand and eighteen, which would be to provide recreation programs for senior adults at the Walker Park Senior Adult Center and the Hillcrest Towers. They are also in our contract to be an emergency shelter in the case that our city needs to establish one there. The funding that we are requesting is the same as we had in two thousand and seventeen. And tonight, we do have Jerry Mitchell, who's the Director of the Area Agency on Aging, with us, and Angie Dunlap, who's the Director of Senior Center Services. Do you have any questions for me to address?
Okay, what questions do we have for Connie? All right. We will open it up for public comment. Everybody gets one turn at the microphone. You have a five minute time. Unless a council member brings you back to ask you questions, and then, or if the council decides to give you more time via a motion and a second by the council and approval by the council, keep your comments addressed to me. Give us your name, your address. And don't engage anybody on the City Council or anybody out in the public. So who would like to be first? Everybody has to step up to the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Tom Frazier, and a quick inquiry. Is the five minute rule per person or in the aggregate?
It's per person.
Okay. Again, my name is Tom Frazier, and I'm here representing myself as a consumer of services, as a senior citizen. In addition, I am representing a fine gentleman that I've taken care of for quite a while, who has dementia and has been a regular at the Senior Center for almost four months. He has dementia, but he still has common sense. And so he has some questions about the proceedings this evening. The first one is, in terms of the waiving of the bidding process, et cetera, et cetera, and having this outsourced to a, what then is essentially a sole source provider, is that, can that be bifurcated from the, from the issue of the contract itself? Could that be two separate issues, or is this in one resolution? You're waiving it and approving the contract. So is waiving the, is waiving the bidding process, isn't that a separate issue than approving the contract?
No, in fact, it probably would not be, because you can only waive it during certain circumstances, and the circumstances must justify waiving it. And if you are not sure that the person that you wanna contract with is, is the right entity and has certain qualifications that no other entity would have, and therefore, that's why you could waive competitive bidding. If you don't know who you wanna bid with, if they don't have special and unique qualifications, then the City Council could not waive competitive bidding. We just have to open it up for bidding and seek bids. So no, it's really one and the same thing. If, if, if the City Council determines that the Area Agency on Aging for Northwest Arkansas is a unique bidder, because they've done this for so long and that they have resources that, that we don't have, like other funds that they use for this center, if they feel like that's not unique and is something that would justify waiving competitive bidding, then they couldn't pass this ordinance in either case. So it has to be tied to the person that they're seeking a contract with.
Thank you. We submit that, and pardon my ignorance about the contract itself or when its duration, et cetera. But we submit that, that perhaps the, if there is an opportunity to delay or table this resolution for the moment, that the, that the City Council do exactly what the attorney says. And that is to look into whether or not this is a totally unique agency with the only credentials that are available to properly perform on this agreement, if it's going to be outsourced. And secondly, to take a look at the performance on the contract over the last four or five years and see where the Senior Center was five years ago and see where it is today. And see whether or not that is attributable to the unique talents and resources of the AAA. And secondly, to maybe give thirty days to do a many feasibility study, if you will, to determine whether or not the City of Fayetteville itself could take over the center and its management and its resources, et cetera, et cetera. And finally, to craft a resolution in that regard that would either open it up to bidding or to have the city consider a budget item, et cetera, et cetera, that would really lend itself more readily to the mores and the morals and the culture of Fayetteville itself. And so those are our thoughts on the matter, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you folks.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. I will say, Mr. Frazier, this is an ordinance. If the council decides not to pass it tonight, it would go another two weeks, and then possibly another two weeks after that. Can you hear me?
I didn't quite hear you say-
Okay. The council, it's, it's, it's an ordinance, and the council can leave it on this reading and then go two weeks and have another reading, and then go two weeks after that and have another reading. Okay. 'Cause it is an ordinance. Whether they choose to do that or not will be the choice of the council.
And Mayor, I just wanna make a comment that this contract, the current contract, will expire at the end of December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. So a new contract or a new decision must be made so the center can remain open on the second of January.
Because if it goes, say, thirty days into the day, then there won't be, we don't have a contract any longer.
Quick question. Is the public aware of that, I mean, the end of the contract and the-
I, I don't.
Okay.
Well, this is a contract we renew annually in the last month of the year after the budget is approved.
I'm not suggesting you're under any obligation to do that, I'm just curious.
Okay, thank you. Who else would like to address, come up, Albert?
Opie Shepherd. Yes, I'm sorry it's such a short notice, but we didn't know till about two weeks ago or less that the best ever director of that Senior Center in Fayetteville since I've been, well, I'm seventy-seven now, and I've been going there since I was sixty or so, whatever. Uh, the best one we've ever had. And she was let go in the last two weeks. We didn't know anything about it till it happened. And they can justify that for themselves. But plenty of people at the Senior Center are very unhappy about that change when it was made, the suddenness of it. And I truly believe that we could operate it better. I know the city gives a lot. The building belongs to the city. Much of the work that's done there to keep it in good shape is done by city workers. When the lights need changing, I believe it's always the city worker who has to climb way up there to the sky to do it. So it wouldn't be impossible, looking at the amounts of money that are donated by different groups to the city for various reasons, and the fact that we probably are gonna have a great year anyway. And this amount of money we're giving should go straight to the Senior Center, not to an agency in, what, ninety miles away? How far is it? Anyway, I, I would ask that you please delay it to the end of the month. And nothing's going to be bad if you do that and consider the options. And all of you someday, we got some pretty young people here nowadays, but every one of you will someday probably want to go to a good Senior Center and close to home. And this is one of the best. You've seen a lot of money earned or brought to the center by that director. If I understand it correctly, her salary would not be a big salary if she were working for the city. She's been paid thirty-one thousand, I understand, in the last few years. And she was raising money with the Georges and different places, having events that were successful. And, you know, she knows everybody's name. She walks around and speaks to them. She knows people that come from out of town, and they're with you visiting, and she comes and meets them. So I, I don't know that there's another person ready to take that job for that much money and do it nearly as well. I'd like to see her back in her position there. So please consider at least holding it and giving us more time.
Okay, thank you all. Who else?
I'm Peggy Treiber. I live on Dixon Street. I remember watching the Senior Center be built when I was in my forties and thinking, maybe, gee, someday I'll get to go there. And I do. I object to the public recreation services, because more of us are there for socialization, exercise, the exercise in the line dancing classes, and the meals program. So it's a whole, recreation doesn't begin to cut it. Yeah, bingo's a big deal, and the fire department will be there tomorrow calling the numbers. But it's so much, it's so much more than that. We met, some of us met with Lionel last week, and Don, and Connie, and we learned that there's not time for the city to take over running the Senior Center come January first. It sounds like a great idea. I think a lot of us were very upset over Kayla's being fired. And we wanna let the Area Agency on Aging know that we're gonna be watching and expecting a director of the same caliber as her, which is going to be hard when you only pay thirty-one thousand. But we're gonna be watching, and if it's possible for the agency, and I don't know what, what you, what role you might play in that, in them doing as the Walton Art Center has recently done, bringing in the serious candidates and letting them meet with some of the people that they would be working with, some of the volunteers and staff, so that it's not just made by the people in Harrison, the decision's not just made by the people in Harrison. That would be something that we all have discussed earlier. And they're just saying, so they don't have to come up here and stand and say, yes, we'd like to be part of it, we'd like to be part of it. And we, Lionel told us to watch and report to the city, because that's our first, our first avenue. But I guess that's all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Who else would like to address this? Yeah, sure?
I'm standing, I guess I'm the last one. I'm not the last one standing, but I'm, I'm Jeremy Hess. Excuse me. I know that you can't make personnel decisions about who the next director is, and as upset as some of us might be about the firing of this one, I'm not sure that's the main issue here. I, I would ask the city, Mr. Petty said something earlier about when we passed the bonds for the Theater Squared, about how this would affect generations to come, how our grandchildren would live in a different Fayetteville because this building was being done. I, I would submit that it's a very similar situation with the Senior Center. The population gets older. Some of you guys might not recognize that, but some of us do. And, and we'll all be there, hopefully, at one point in time. So the, the management and maintenance of the Senior Center is, is not insignificant. I would hope that at some point in the future, the city might develop a program where they could at least look into the possibility of taking it over. I know that you don't wanna manage the Senior Center, and I know you don't wanna have to fundraise, but I think it's, I think it is that important. Having said that, I know that, that you're talking about approving a contract. Is that correct, Kit? So do you have any leverage in terms of the contract? For instance, could you say, "We can approve the contract, subject to our approving whoever the next director is going to be"? Because I think part of the problem is there is a, there can be a significant deterioration between directorships, if you will. Kayla was excellent. I'm, I'm not here to argue her merits. The previous people were not nearly as good. And during that time, the center fell into a little bit of deterioration in terms of the money that, that they were able to fundraise, in terms of the programs that they were able to create, in terms of how they were taking care of the senior citizens. So I think it's crucial that the director be top notch and that they have a familiarity with Fayetteville and the institutions that the Senior Center can serve. So I don't know if that's within the wherewithal of the contract to, to make that sort of stipulation. If it is, I would hope at least that you would consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address this on this? Who else would like to address this on this? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Sir.
Mayor, I would like to see us hold this on this reading. I took the, I had the opportunity to meet with the former director, Kayla, and, you know, she raised some interesting issues, which some of which have been addressed to my satisfaction and some of which have not, that I would like to look into further. And while I recognize we don't have time to devise a new plan before the new year, I do think that it's something we should consider. And I just did want to take a moment to acknowledge on the record how many letters and emails and messages of support I received on behalf of Kayla Wilson. And as an alderman who, we host our award meetings down at the Senior Center, I always found that facility to be very well-run by her. And just the general level of the programming and the staff there to be excellent. So I just want to say thank you to Kayla for her years of service. And I've always been quite ashamed at the low level of pay for that position. She worked very hard. She was pretty much on call twenty-four hours a day because they only had a part-time maintenance staff worker. So when a senior citizen had a difficult situation in the bathroom, she was there to clean it up. When the alarm went off in the middle of the night, she was there to respond. And to expect that level of service for someone making thirty-one thousand dollars a year is shameful. And I think we need to do better for our seniors and the people that care for them.
All right, John.
Well, for someone who doesn't manage to schedule all that efficiently, let me say I agree with Councilmember Marsh. I think we should hold it here. I'm not sure why we have someone in Harrison making decisions for our people here in Fayetteville. I like the idea of local control. I realize it would be difficult for us to come in and take over a program in this short notice, and that's probably not likely to happen. But, you know, our last speaker asked, well, maybe could we change the contract a little bit? That would be for Mr. Williams to decide, but my contract law education tells me you can always make it for six months, not a whole twelve months. Or you make it for one quarter, three months. I don't know if the other party would be willing to do that, but it's something we certainly should look at and talk about. So I'd like to hold it right here, and let's have a broader discussion of this.
Sure. And, and I don't, I don't mind holding it for two weeks, but we're going to start to get into a crunch before the end of the year. The last thing I want is that nobody run in that Senior Center by the first of the year, okay? I mean, and I'm good with holding it as long as we can. And you want to hold it longer, I can call a special city council meeting if I need to before the end of the year, once I have that skill set.
Mr. Mayor, before you go on to the next, Connie, did you say that Mr. Mitchell's here? Would you like to address some of the items that have come up? And, and also about contract, contractual terms? Because it obviously takes two parties to agree to terms.
Very true. Very good point.
I tried to make, well, thank you. I'm Jerry Mitchell. I'm the executive director for the Area Agency on Aging. We administer the senior program in nine counties. We were set up quite a while ago, thirty-five-plus years ago by Congress, and it was stipulated that we'd be a nonprofit organization, and we would advocate and provide services to seniors. Our Senior Center program's almost always been running through contracts with either a cap agency or the Economic Development Agency. Four years ago, there were some issues with the Economic Development Agency. Over in Harrison, we took the contract back. And to address that at that time, Kayla Wilson was the Senior Center Director at Harrison. And we went ahead and retained almost all the employees that was, that were former workers of the Economic Development District. The problem did not rest with the employees that were out in the Senior Center so much. We, again, we would like to contract. It's our preference to have a local contractor, if we could have one, to manage the Senior Center. That's the preference. We, we, our goal's not to continue to do direct services. We kept it for three years before we put out an RFP so that we could get things straightened up. There were some issues that had to be addressed. We wanted more transparency. We wanted more following policies and procedures. And we've tried to implement those things throughout the six counties that we took back. As far as personnel policies, we can't comment on those. And the reasons for our terminations and whatever until those all get settled. So because someone leaves, that's not exactly the end of the road when it comes to personnel issues. As far as your, the contract decision, if, if that needs to be looked at more, I'm, I'm certainly happy to meet and, and visit with the city if they have, if they have some issues there. We've had an excellent working relationship with the city. I think if you'll go back in your records, I think we put over two hundred thousand dollars into it or something like that into getting the Senior Center started here out of the Area Agency on Aging. We watched it come out of the ground and have gone through all that. At that time, the Council on Aging was our contractor that was working with it. So we're open to this. We want to have the best Senior Center in Fayetteville that we can have. The sen- the citizens here deserve it. We'd like for it to be that way. And so, you know, we're, we're very open to it, Mayor. So that's where we are. I agree with the salary. It's horrible. A lot of our salaries are. Our people don't work for the money. If you're in the nonprofit business taking care of elderly, it doesn't pay that well. So it's, it's just that way. I feel like our people are very dedicated, and if they're not, we try to address that issue. So with that, I'll, any other things that may not have been said here? You know, I'll, I'll, I'll try to address them for you.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask him a couple of questions?
Sure.
It was brought up that there was some desire that the contract would give the city at least some input on the next director that would be selected here. Would you be open to having some input by the city on that decision?
Sure, I'll, I'll discuss that with you. The, we have to, again, make sure of qualifications and background checks and all that kind of stuff. But I could get with our staff, and we could talk about if, if there needs to be someone from the city council, or if Parks and Recreation, if whoever would like to sit in on that interview process. We have not interviewed anyone yet. We were waiting. We have, I think we may have six or eight applications. Some of those have previous experience, I've been told by our HR people. But we would let, we would let someone come in and sit in on it, sure. And, and again, you know, it's, we're not, we're not foreign to Fayetteville. We, or to Washington County, our agency employs probably seventy-five to a hundred people here in Washington County at any one time. Our regional office is in Harrison because it sits in the middle of the region. Our off, our office for the Area Agency on Aging is down on Waterfront. And that's where our, our staff that does case management in home services is. So again, we're in all nine counties. We've got about, at any one time, we have six hundred and fifty, seven hundred people working for us. So, you know, we're out there trying to, nobody knows about us till you need us. So, and I'm glad to hear the good things said about Mrs. Wilson and, you know, our staff here that, that do that. And let me just say for y'all's benefit, our Senior Center Directors oftentimes, as our care coordinators, case managers, RNs, they become part of that caregiving network, part of that caregiving family. And it is tragic when, when we have to terminate one or they quit and move on to another position. So I, I do feel for these people. And there's never a good time to lose an employee the way we look at it.
Well, I want to say then, I will probably attempt a slight modification to the contract to provide some input from the city, probably city staff, over the selection of the executive director. Obviously, we realize you run your own organization and, and, but for the executive director's position, I think the city might want to have a little bit of input on that.
Senior Center Director, I'm the executive director.
No, I'm sorry, the Senior Center Director. No, I'm, I won't have input on your job.
There are a lot of people that like to have input on my position. So anyway, but sure, I want, we want to have a partnership here. And if that's what it takes, you know, that's it. Our board's local. Washington County has two members on our Area Agency on Bo- Area Agency on Aging, former Judge Jerry Hunter and John Gibson on the Aging Foundation, which is a separate entity, and I understand, that's come up in some conversations people have had with me. It is separate, but Joyce Bunch and, let's see, Steve Clark represent Washington County on that foundation. Louis Epley and Fred Vorsinger are former members on it. So y'all have, y'all are very well represented on those. And if you know those guys, they're not yes people. I mean, you know, they're, they're very much into it. So, and I, my five minutes, though. Okay. But.
I, I think Councilmember Marsh has some questions.
Yes, Mr. Mitchell. I, in speaking with the former director, she expressed that she was directed by the, your agency to, that she was not allowed to apply for grants to pursue continuing education for her and her staff. Can you explain that, please?
I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not aware of that specific thing. But we do require all of our Senior Center Directors to come in and get authority from the, from Angie Dunlap and myself before they submit a grant. And the reason for that is, we've had, we, we have had Senior Center Directors that have submitted grants that they could not possibly do. So we want to make sure before they obligate the Senior Center or themselves that it's something that fits in that they can do. So I, I don't know about the continuing education, and I, I will look into it, though.
Please do so and report to the council. Additionally, she expressed that she, there was an inordinately long amount of time to fulfill staffing requests, in particular with Meals on Wheels drivers. How long bef- we, between the time that that position, with, that those positions were vacated and they were filled? What is the average length of time?
I, I don't know that either. I would have to look into it. You're asking for a Meals on Wheels driver.
Yes, in particular, a Meals on Wheels driver. But she said every time she would make a staff request, it would take a long time to fill that request, which put her in a very difficult position of covering that missing staff member.
Yeah, there, I do know before a staffing position, if it's a new position, it has to be verified that there's budget for that. If it's an old position, oftentimes it's filled back or it's advertised right after it's terminated.
Okay. Well, I would like to know if you could report back to the council.
And I think Angie's making notes back there so we can get this information back to you.
Thank you. And then another concern that I've heard from the community is that there, there was not an overall atmosphere of inclusiveness for our LGBTQ senior citizens. Can you talk about what the AAA's policy is on inclusiveness towards LGBTQ citizens?
Our policy is, is that we don't discriminate. And LGBT, as far as I'm concerned, is as welcome in any program we've got as anyone else is. It doesn't, it, it doesn't, and should not matter.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And if there's issues that, that's happening or someone's doing it, I would like it reported so that we can follow up on it. And thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Mitchell? All right.
Thank you.
I assume you all want to leave it here for two weeks? Okay? All right.
Mayor, do you want to make a couple? The budget that the Area Agency on Aging shared with us specifically as it relates to the Fayetteville Center. I know that you had emails that, or accusations were made that money was put in the foundation and not necessarily going to the program or to the center itself when designated. We verified that that does not happen, that it actually get, does go into a foundation, but gets designated and spent in the programs that it is targeted for. If you look at this also, it outlines on page, find it, three, the fundraising that is specific. You'll see our amount on the ninety-eight eighty-seven is the portion that we contribute. Above that, the hundred and ninety-four thousand is dollars that the agency brings to the table on their own, that if we were not contracting with them, would actually be utilized within the entire county area and would not go to our center simply if the city took that over. And on the very last page, it's the actual cost of, of running this, which is over six hundred thousand. And while this is an extremely important area of services, I do want to remind the council that if we had an extra six hundred thousand annually, the priorities.